I'd like to call the Wenton Woods Board of Education meeting to order on Monday, August 25, 2014. If you would please rise and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you call the roll?
Mr. Penneka?
Here.
Mr. Cleary?
Here.
Dr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Miranda?
Present.
Mrs. Burns?
Here.
2.01 District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts, and Introductions.
Madam President, before I give the great honors to a fantastic guy who's made the district just outstanding, we wanted to make sure that we had a show of solidarity. And so, this is also a test to see how well my administrative team remember what I asked them. So, I asked them the 1st of July if they would report to the first board meeting, just so that they would see that you would see that we are serious about our business of educating our children. And so, Ms. Wilson, would you come up and make sure that you introduce each person? And please, administrators, I know you all will have a lot to say, but there's nothing for you to say tonight.[98.11][98.11](Laughter).
Well, good evening. I am here to introduce all of our wonderful administrators. And there are a bunch of you all, so if I forget anyone, just raise your hand and give me a little sign. I'll start with Primary North. We have a new member to our team, Adrian Martin. And she has an assistant who's part-time, one day a week, Liz Stiles, who was recently promoted from the teaching ranks. Primary South, Tanya Bray, is returning this year. And she's also our lead principal, who is doing the ment-- she's implemented a mentoring program for the district, where she's mentoring all of our new administrators. Liz Stiles is also supporting Mrs. Bray at South, one day a week. At the ES, we have Kendall Dorsey and Linda Pavlenak, who was promoted last year to part-time assistant principal, and now she's going to be full-time at the ES as assistant principal. At the IS, we have Jeremy Day, who's returning for his first full year. As you know, he had a couple of false starts, and so now he's ready to go from day one. And his support this year is Michelle Lumpkin, who is-- who was also promoted from within. And we had to actually go and get her. She tried to leave us, and we went after her. So, and she's back. Let's see. We've got the high middle school, Doug Sanker. Douglas, good evening. And with him is his assistant principal, Kim Harrison Fowler, who was new to us last year. This is her second year with us. From the high school, we have a new high school principal, Eric Martin. And he has a new team of Kevin Jones, who was promoted from guidance counselor to assistant principal, Amber Strauser, who's returning for her second year, and the very accomplished Dave Lumpkin, who's been with us for a number of years. From the community building or central office, we have Student Services Director Patty Darcy, who oversees our special ed department, with her lovely assistant Diana Whitehead, who was promoted last year to that position from AP. We also have, let's see, Karina Denny, who's with Student Services. She's our-- well, she's actually district, I'm sorry, not Student Services, but the B, and I'm going to butcher the title, I'm sorry. The family, Community Engagement for the district, as we all know. Rhonda Hobbs, our tech director is here. And Brenda Hodges-Davis, who oversees Project Success, and she's also the district hearing officer, is with us this evening. Oh, and let's see, from Teaching and Learning, we have Dr. Holden, who has given up her multiple roles within the district in favor of one role, as Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. And she has with her tonight Danielle Wallace, who is a curriculum specialist and from CPS, and we were able to steal her away as well. Now, also supporting Dr. Holden is Liz Stiles. She's the lucky person this year that gets to do multiple jobs. But Liz is supporting Teaching and Learning three days a week. Steve Denny is here. I think we all know Steve, and he's got several titles: Business Manager and Executive Director of Accountability. And, am I missing anyone? Well, and then the treasurer, from the treasurer's office, we have Nancy Starkey, who does payroll for us, and she also works very closely with HR. And so, she's a big support to me as well.
New president.
Yes. And Bradley Lanier, who are you? Oh, Brad Lanier is the new president of the Teachers Association, and he's here this evening as well. And he's keeping us very busy. Quite diligent. Did I miss anyone? Did I get everyone?
Lumpkin? Did you get Lumpkin?
Yeah, both Lumpkins, yes.
Both Lumpkins.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you.
Now, on to the Community Spirit Award. I have to say, this award was written with your name all over it, Mr. Hill. And when I grow up, I want to be like you. So, here's the definition of this award. "The recipient is a community or business member who demonstrates an exemplary spirit of dedication and service to the students and families of Wenton Woods City Schools. This recipient leads by example, has made significant contributions to the district over a period of years, and strengthens our Wenton Woods community by: One, appreciating and celebrating student achievement and successes; Two, serving others by giving of their own time and talents; Three, working with a positive attitude and energy; Four, creating and/or enhancing a sense of community for students and families; and Five, being accessible, approachable, and engaging with the community." How many people know Mr. Hill? Okay, so, the attributes that I read, do they all fit?
Yes.
Absolutely. Yes. I was hoping you would wear the wig tonight, but you didn't. So, this award is presented to Mr. Hill for his many, many years of service, and we are very, very fortunate to have you on our team. Thank you. Ms. Burns is going to present you with a nice award.
This award reads, "Community Spirit Award, Lieutenant Jermaine Hill, for your dedication, commitment to Wenton Woods City Schools, August 25, 2014."
Thank you so much.
All right. I'm not going to cry. I promise. It's my allergies. Just acting up a whole lot right now. First, I want to say thank you to Mr. Smith and the entire school board, the Wenton Woods School District for accepting me as one of your own. I'm a transplant from Cincinnati. I'm still a Cincinnati boy, but like I said before, this is my second home. My wife is a product of Forest Park or Wenton Woods School District?
Forest Park, yeah.
It's Forest Park, then, way back in the Stone Age. But I just, I can't say enough about this award. And honestly, with the things that you guys are trying to do with our school district, I'm just trying to match your energy. I have a supportive chief that put me in this position. I have a supportive family that allow me to miss games and, you know, bug them and have them proofread some of the stuff that I put out. And I have a wonderfully supportive school district that allows us to not only teach the traditional fire safety programs, but come have fun with you, have the daddy-daughter dances. And what's lost on a lot of people in some of the fire service as well is that when you do those things outside of the traditional fire safety, it makes it, when you have fun with the students and with the parents and with the businesses, that makes them more receptive to your messages. Okay? They allow us to come in. You know, I mean, and it's, I'm not, I'm not, I'm giving that right. You know, that, this is, this is an opportunity. You guys allow us to do this. The parents allow me to come in and talk to them and talk to their students and impact them positively. And for that, I am grateful. And more to come this year and the years following. I love what I do. Again, thank you Chief Jones for putting me in this position. And I'm always open to suggestions and comments, so whatever you have, give it to me. I'll respond. And thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we can break for a five-minute recess. It looks like there was a party invitation that was sent out, and I wasn't quite sure what was going on. But if those of you who need to leave, feel free to do so at this time, and we'll reconvene in five minutes. You'll take your seats. We will reconvene. 4.0 Public Comments. We have three. Jennifer Kelly Mast, please.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Kelly Mast. I have a son in first grade of Primary North. I have a, my name's Jennifer Kelly Mast, have a son in Primary North in first grade, and a preschooler that will start tomorrow. My comments is mostly about the uniform change and the way it was sent out. I am particularly irritated that it was only sent out electronically. I'm irritated because not everybody has electronic access. I do. I was well-informed. And my son doesn't even have spirit wear, so it didn't really affect us. But I'm concerned about parents that don't have electronic access. Also, and before I get really irritated, I want to know, was this sent out in any other format and any other language?
Well, if you'll go ahead and finish your comments.
Yeah, I was really irritated that it was only sent out in English, that I could only say it was sent out in English. In my son's school, there's a high Hispanic population. And I was, I've been really irritated about this this summer, thinking that there'd be children that would show up and potentially told that they needed to change, or maybe didn't buy all their uniforms, thinking that they could wear what they were allowed to wear last year. I don't speak a word of Spanish. I don't speak a word of any other language, but other than French, which isn't a language that we need to be concerned about here particularly. But it really, really irritated me. Perhaps it's because I'm a social worker and I think about other people a lot, but it's really bothered me all summer. And that, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Are there any board comments?
It was a perspective that I, quite honestly, had not considered. So, I appreciate you coming forward and bringing that perspective. And I think we'll definitely have some conversation about that. I don't think you're the only one necessarily who has that perspective, so. But I appreciate you bringing it forward, because when you or anyone else in the community brings something forward to our attention, maybe it's something we haven't thought of, that puts us in a better position to consider it for the next time and maybe not make the same, take the same steps. So, thank you.
I'm not exactly sure how it was disseminated, but there is a, there is a Spanish copy of that, because I've seen it. How it was disseminated, I'm not exactly sure. If it was just on the website, or, but I've actually seen a hard copy of it. But once again, I'm not sure how it was disseminated. And this is probably a good opportunity to add on some, possibly some additional comments from the Board of Education, in that the reason the uniform policy was changed, it was to help clarify what the policy was. It really didn't change. It just clarified that there is a policy, and it just got a little bit out of control. So, we just wanted to kind of lasso that back in and say, please stick to the policy. The board, I don't believe, had any issues with spirit wear. It's just spirit wear was never intended to be uniform. It was meant for special occasions. It was meant for spirit days. But apparently, it morphed into something, into something else. If the board has any other comments on that.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is that I don't think we changed the policy. We just kind of went back to where it was. So, I think that it may have been getting out of control, and that's, you know, what happened. So, I'm glad you clarified that. Mr. Cleary?
Any additional comments? Thank you. Maria Walter?
Hi, good evening. I'm Maria Walter Wheeler. I'm a taxpayer for Green Hills, Ohio. And I would like to inquire as to whether or not any local religious organizations have stepped up to offer religious classes to Wenton Woods High School students who wish to take advantage of the new state law, House Bill 171, and becomes, that bill becomes effective, signed by the governor, becomes effective on 9/11 of 14, allowing the high school credits, two high school credits for religious instruction. What is the vetting process for approving instructors for religious classes? Is it a divinity degree or an equivalent requirement? What are the plans on that? And second, I would like, if Madam President could indulge me, the next meeting, which is anxiously, anxiously awaited all the time, between the Forest Park Council and the Board of Education, is the third Thursday. And I, correct, it's still on and is here in this building?
That is correct, but it's the third Thursday in September.
In September, because we are on vacation in August. I understand that. And also, at this time, also, Mr. Moore, the mayor of Green Hills, would like to join me as well. So, thank you so much for considering me as part of your, of your adopted family there. I just feel so great when I'm there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Additional comments? Mr. Lanier?
Mr. Brad Lanier, President WWTA. I am very excited to be here and look forward to working with everyone here in this building, community, board, our great administrative team. And we have so many positives going on in this district going forward, that there's a, I really feel that there's a great sense of hope and optimism among the teaching staff. And I want to make sure that the community and district can hear that loud and clear, because we've had, we've had some great leaders here in the past, but, and many of us teachers are very self-motivated. But this is the first time in a long time that, you know, coming off a convocation, that really many of the teachers felt inspired by the message and all by the district administrators. And very, very exciting. Plus, with the new building bond issue coming up, a sense of a lot of optimism among the teaching staff and students in the building. And just overall, with the economy picking back up, I think we're really poised and in a great position to make a turnaround. And we're excited to be part of that as a teaching staff for the district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome to your new role. 5.0 Approval of Minutes?
Madam Chair, before we have a motion, I, late this afternoon, I discovered an error, potentially two errors, in the minutes prepared for the August 14th special session. Specifically, roll call at the end of executive session at 6:35 has me present. In fact, I left the meeting at 5:30. I was not present at the roll call. And the roll call and the adjournment were two minutes apart. Madam Chair, you're listed as president, present at the roll call, but Mr. Cleary is listed as adjourning the meeting. I suspect that's not quite right.
You are correct, because I did not leave. So, we will have that corrected.
So, for my purposes, the minutes should just say that I left the meeting at 5:30. Was not there at roll call. Thank you. Other than that, with those modifications, I would move the approval of minutes as presented.
Mrs. Burns, were you present at that meeting?
On the 14th, I believe I was.
We'll fix it.
There's a motion to approve the minutes as standing and corrected. Is there a second?
Was there a motion?
I made the motion.
For all four sets?
Yes.
Okay, a second?
Moved and seconded. Any further questions? Mr. Seymour, will you call the roll?
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Thank you. 6.0 Treasurer's Report.
The report is for the month of July, not a whole, a lot of activity for the month of July. We actually had revenues in the general fund of 11.9 million, which is mostly tax advances from real estate tax settlement, and expenditures for the month of 2.7 million, leaving the balance of all, in all funds of 19 and a half million due to the real estate advance, of which 18.3 million was the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Is there a motion to approve the...
Financial reports of July 2014 are referred to audit.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, the resolution for permanent appropriations?
First of all, I need to clarify the investments for the month of...
Oh, I'm sorry. I did skip that. I'm sorry.
For the month of July.
Skip down to the line.
Interest income was, I know you're really excited to hear about it, was $2,536 for the month of July. That's all I wanted to mention.
These will be sent to audit?
We need a motion for that one.
I move that we accept the treasurer's investment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
Now, your resolution.
Before we do the resolutions, I have a small presentation to give. I'm so excited. I have an audience this year. A captive audience.
They came for, just for you, Mr. Treasurer.
Basically, why it's coming up each year, I just get up here and start going over all the slarts and the slides and the little charts. And maybe I should try to show, give a brief overview how we get to this point. Last March and April, our office sends out budget requests to all the principals. All the principals, the first phase of the budget will be the principals' allocations. They're given their allocations. And they have certain accounts which they're allowed to divvy that money up into. That's followed by the departments. We work with the curriculum department. We work with buildings and grounds. And we work with Mr. Denny on all the permanent improvements that we'll have to make. We check in with Rhonda on all of her technology issues. And then we bring in, those are the big department, the department budgets. The last phase of all of that is I pull all that together. I meet with the superintendent, and I share with him where we're at on the non-personnel budget. We see if we need to make any adjustments to that, change anything, and any initiatives that he might have that's non-personnel. Then, the final phase is that, Mrs. Wilson, Mr. Smith, and I work on all the changes for staffing, any increases and any decreases. And then that's all rolled in. And then I have multitudes of spreadsheets. Roll them all up, and I bring this presentation to you for your review. So, it's a process that started last spring. So, for tonight, we're going to first review the 2014-15 school year appropriations. Many people interchange it as budget. The correct wording is appropriations for this year. And it might help if I bring my slide.
I heard that violin music.
I know.
Wow. Really upping the...
It's really fancy.
I'm not all numbers, you know. First of all, we do, we talk the most about general fund, because it's our most discretionary fund. But the board will be adopting all funds. We have general fund. We have special revenue funds. And then we have some other funds. So, your total adoption tonight will be almost $52 million. In the special revenue funds, these are not all of them, but they're some of the major funds. We have our athletic department, auxiliary services, which is John Paul, which we receive state dollars, and we spend them on their behalf through purchase orders and requisitions that they file. We have IDEA, Special Education, Title I School Improvement, Title I Regular, 1.2 million. And IDEA, for almost a million, are our two largest special revenue funds. We also have our permanent improvement appropriation this year for around $1 million, and our food service program of 1.8 million. And they're in their own funds. The board does not transfer or support the food service or any of our permanent improvement programs here at all. But most people focus on the budget is in the general fund. That's where all your tax dollars are rolling into. When people may be critical of where we're at, when we're asking for additional revenues other than bond, which has nothing to do with anything we're talking about tonight. No bond proceeds will be going in to support any of the items that are here tonight. So, we're talking about the general fund. And in our general fund for this year, we're estimating 45 million. And as you can see, the state revenue, along with our local taxes, are making up almost 90-some percent of that. We have some other local income, and we have some other state income, and some investment proceeds.
I'm sorry, Mr. Seymour, where's the sliver for the investment? Because I don't quite see that green.
It's a gray area there. 0.01.
Thank you.
Yes. If you have any, if you have any personal portfolios, you can see how devastating this is. Because when you have public funds, I cannot invest like you all can. And if I go to a bank or commercial, they have to pledge securities and bond all that. And they're just not paying very well right now. So, we continue to investigate other alternatives. After the success of our bond levy in November, we're going to have to come up with a plan in order to invest those dollars wisely for the people to help support any cost overruns that could happen, or local initiatives. So, right now, the total tax base for Wenton Woods is 465 million. Four years ago, that was 570 million. As you know, we've gone through major adjustments in the values of our real estate all across the state. Currently, you have a current millage of 85.41, and an effective millage of 51 for residential and 61 for commercial. As you know, the effective rate is a result of any increase in total values, lowering any voted millage. You can never collect more than you originally passed. So, in those times when the community property values were growing, your effective millage was reducing. But we have seen the reverse happen in your emergency levy, because you passed that for 7.9 mils. It's currently collecting at 9.3. That's the reverse effect. But you're still only collecting the 4.2 million that you told the voters you would. So, for the, this year, we're anticipating 25 million for our real estate tax collections. And that's inclusive of our homestead and rollback. And as you know, any future levies, we will no longer get homestead and rollback from our state. On our state funding, we're anticipating $16 million. Total funding for, the total state is 15.8 million, with some special funding for transportation, special ed, and preschool. We no longer are unit We no longer are, uh, unit funded for preschool. They're running it through the formula based on your enrollment, but they still have it separated from the K-12 funding. Um, this state funding is up, as you know, because with the passage of the new funding formula last year, we were under the cap for the amount, so each year they're allowing us to grow based on the new funding formula. So, if we were, got the new funding formula and it said we were gonna get a twenty percent increase, we only got seven. And then we only get six the coming year, and we will get, we will keep giving funding until we catch up to what they say they're going to fund us at phased in. The problem with this is that our ADM has to maintain stability.
Right.
It's all based on ADM now, and you may or may not be aware that the ADM is now going to be taken three times a year. We no longer will be funded on ADM in the fall. We will be funded on our average ADM throughout the year.
Mr. Seymour, for those who may not know, will you, uh, kinda be explicit about what is ADM?
Oh, average daily membership, sorry. Uh, student enrollment or average daily membership. And obviously, that can fluctuate throughout the year, and I believe there are gonna be three reporting periods this year. Um, Winton Woods is fortunate in that we can work on our processes in order to get this, our reporting stabilized because we're, since we're on the cap, we're under the cap, we won't be so dependent upon the ADM until we hit that cap, if that makes sense. So, it's very imperative with some of the changes in EMIS and some of the things that we're going in the district. This is not only gonna impact our reporting, but also our funding now. We have some other local receipts. We get some revenue in lieu of taxes. As you know, we have some tax incremental financing agreements with Forest Park, Springfield Township. And what this means is that they enter into a diversion of your taxes, and then they resend them to Winton Woods to hold us harmless, so that we don't lose those. We have our student fees. This is inclusive of our student fees for instruction and our pay to participate for our extracurricular. We have open enrollment, which is slightly underestimated. We hope to get more than that. But I was being conservative because our open enrollment, I believe, is up thirty students, around thirty students. Does that sound about right? And then we have tuition coming from other districts, and this is tuition only for court-placed or foster-placed children within the district. And then we have rental facilities, and then we have some other miscellaneous income from the state. We have some career and technology. Uh, this district does a lot of medic, uh, work through our special ed department. We have to, uh, Mrs. Darcy's office is responsible for all the reporting for Medicare, and we get some Medicare reimbursement if a child is receiving services and they have Medicare and they're getting itinerant services. We have also what's called catastrophic aid. We get some funds from the state. These are for special ed students who cost the district more than thirty-six thousand dollars. We get a percentage of the amount over thirty-six thousand. And we have, we get some E-rate, which is, uh, from the federal government, which is to support our communications. I believe we're using it for our telephone, our internet service, and, uh, Mrs. Hobbs is responsible for this. Did I miss one? It's the internet.
The internet, the phone service, the cell phone service?
Mostly communications. And of course, you've heard about the casino proceeds, which are gonna save the schools. We're gonna get a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then we will continue. They were phasing out tangible personal property, but as you know, we're getting a partial reimbursement, and there's been no discussion on taking that away to date. So it's a good thing for us.
Did we ever get anything from the Ohio Lottery? Ever?
Uh, you get money from the Ohio Lottery, but it's, goes into a pot and it's redistributed. It's no longer coming as a separate. So our total receipts, as you can see, have, uh, have s, have been relatively stable. The only area that seems to, that has grown significantly is the green area, which is your other receipts, and that's a direct result of your, uh, open enrollment policy. You have increased your local receipts over the years by going to open enrollment. So how are the dollars spent? The state has come out with a new system, although they haven't given us any comparative data. They have not really told us how exactly they're doing it, but they're only going to categorize instruction and operations. Under instruction is everything that's direct, directly related to the child, uh, in the classroom or speech, psychol, psychology, uh, OP, PT, counseling services, everything directly rated to the children. Operations is administration, transportation, and facilities and maintenance. So, this district is spending over seventy-one cents of every dollar directly in the classroom. I have no comparative data. I'm not, don't know if that's a good, uh, but in the original, uh, things that we saw last year come out, the average district was running in the sixties. Sixty percent, high sixties. So I would anticipate that we look fairly good on the amount of our dollars going directly to the classroom. Um, for our salaries and benefits, we have included for this year our negotiated increases, which I have put in approximately one point five million for salaries and the associated benefits that would go with that. We have done some staffing reallocation. Mrs. Wilson is going to go over that for you. And that estimated take, price take is one point one million, and, uh, I have projected a five percent increase for healthcare. And Mrs. Wilson's going to go over what all you're getting for your expenditure of one million dollars.
Well, as Mr. Seymour mentioned, um, we have spent roughly one million, um, this year on, um, staffing reallocation. So I'm gonna just go over briefly with, with you what you're getting for that. Uh, we've done some retooling of teaching and learning. Uh, Dr. Holden, um, has taken over as executive director. But that job, uh, we quickly realized is just too big for just one person, so she did need, um, some help. And so we purchased, um, a part-time math curriculum administrator, and the person that I kept having stand up earlier, um, she is now supporting, uh, in the math curriculum department three days a week. And then what we did, we lost, um, Alicia Sellens, for those of you who've been here and knew her. Um, she was an accomplished teacher. Um, she was promo, she was given an offer by another district, so we did have to replace her. And we were very lucky to, um, land with Danielle Wallace, um, that we recruited from another district where she was doing great things. Our student services department has worked, um, conscientiously to help us save money. Uh, what we've done is we realized that our special education supervisor, um, rather than employing that person as an employee within the district where we'd be required for benefits, we've replaced that position with a, um, a, a purchase service from Hamilton County, ESC, and that's Bob Stark. We also have a new school psychologist that we've done the same thing. We've contracted with Hamilton County and per, and gotten that service from them. Uh, with respect, we had a retirement among our nursing staff, Cindy Marqu, who was with us for, for a very long time, retired. And so we, uh, took that opportunity to replace that one body with two, um, FTEs, meaning two bodies, hired as a LPN through Hamilton County. So that saved us money, but also allowed us to serve more students. Uh, we've added, uh, and a, a student resource officer who would be dedicated to the high school. Um, and this was done, um, because of the mandates from the state, uh, with respect to state attendance reporting. So there have been some changes in the law that require daily reporting and, uh, require us to, um, to aggressively pursue truant students, um, in a way that we needed more, um, more support. Along those same lines, we've had to add staff to our EMIS department. Uh, we did add a centralized withdrawal secretary to, due to the increased demands in state attendance reporting. And then we also, um, reclassified our secretarial pool, um, so that they would be more equipped to, um, handle the EMIS requirements, which are very technical and, um, detail oriented. So what, what we did is our new, uh, EMIS supervisor, Vinita Kilgore, uh, cross-trained all of our secretaries. And then we've asked all of our administrators to allow those secretaries dedicated time during the day without interruption to make sure that they're able to, um, work on their, uh, reporting requirements. In the past, um, those, those same people were putting Band-Aids on kids and answering the phones and dealing with parents and dealing with teachers, all while, while trying to input data. And so what Ms. Kilgore made very clear is that that's just not the way to do business and, and you're asking for trouble. And so we have, um, listened to her and we've, we've tooled our clerical staff. There've been some changes at the high school. Uh, we did reduce three teaching positions, uh, one in science, one in Spanish, and one in math, which saved us some money. Uh, and then we had a number of teachers that we had to replace. Uh, we replaced the high school principals I mentioned earlier. We replaced two assistant principals, uh, three guidance counselors, fifteen teachers, and you can see the breakdown there, um, in this subject matter. And then we also had to replace the EMIS secretary who was promoted to the, um, previous slide position of the centralized withdrawal secretary, and that's Connie Erby. Uh, we did replace, we previously had part-time security at the high school, one, one person that did that. And so what we did is we increased that position to a full-time position. Uh, the other thing that we've done is we've replaced building subs, um, with ASA monitors, and you'll see this on every slide across, um, each grade level. And what we found is that we were using building subs in the past to run our alternative school assignment, which is essentially a way to keep kids in school that have misbehaved, um, rather than suspend them. And what would happen is that, um, if teachers were out, if we didn't have enough coverage, we would have to pull those subs away from that, um, alternative school assignment so that they could cover classrooms. And so as a result, many of our buildings really didn't have an effective ASA program. So what we decided to do is fund the position, make it a position, and hire someone that is, you know, qualified for that role and that has a passion for working with that with students, and to make sure that that staff is dedicated to that position and not pulling that person here and there, um, as needs come up.
And to the board and the community, when you took your building sub away from ASA and put them in the classroom, ASA doesn't exist.
Right.
And so you're running the risk of having children who probably needed a timeout report right back to the classroom, and that frustrates the, the teacher. And so there was a drawback in instructional strategies, uh, and you, you can't really operate school that way because you just create more and more problems. And when the student reports back to the classroom and there hasn't been a, a timeout required, then the only other al, alternative is to suspend the student outside of the school building. That does not improve instructional strategies. So this is a better plan.
Thank you. Um, the other piece, um, is, and you may have recently seen this posting, um, our students with disabilities at the high school, um, the numbers are up. So the state has a prescribed caseload maximum, and we've exceeded that. And so we do have a current posting out to hire a multiple disabilities teacher and an accompanying, um, paraprofessional due to the enrollment of special, um, education students at the high school. Uh, with respect to the intermediate school, we, um, increased the part-time assistant principal to full-time. We've replaced two science teachers. We've replaced a math teacher, uh, reading teachers. And again, we've replaced the building sub with an alternative school assignment monitor. Uh, and that person, um, is dedicated to that assignment. Uh, the other thing that we did is last year, we did an experiment where we hired, um, we were trying to hire part-time lunch and recess monitors, hoping to add support, um, at lunch and recess. Um, with the loss of specials teachers, uh, and some other positions, uh, that we cut in the past. We were hoping that people could come in for two hours at, at lunch or recess and support kids. We tried it and it, it just didn't work, uh, and so we've done away with that. And we've restored, restored the specials teachers, uh, which allows us a little bit more flexibility in terms of coverage and planning. Uh, and then we've also, uh, got the additional staff with, with the ASA monitors. At the elementary school, um, again, we've increased the part-time AP to full-time AP. Uh, we did replace the building secretary, so if you're over there visiting, you'll see a new face, um, in the office, and her name's Kelly Scott. Uh, she's ex-military and she, um, has a, a, I, I'm, I say that because she's, um, she's very accomplished. And she, um, also has a, um, tremendous clerical background working, um, in a local business. Uh, we also replaced the building sub with alternative school assignment, uh, and we've done some hiring at the elementary school as well, as you can see. One gifted teacher, two reading teachers, and one math teacher. And these were all replacements, not additions. The other thing that we did is we, again, restored our specials teachers, uh, reduced the recess monitors. And we did have to hire two IDA-funded, and as Mr. Seymour was speaking about the different pools of money. So we have two grant-funded intervention specialists. And the reason we did that is to support our, um, co-teaching model at the, um, elementary school. Uh, and that was part of, um, that's part of our Ohio Improvement Plan, and so we thought that was the prudent thing to do. The other thing you'll see on the next couple of slides is we've added ESL tutors, um, at, uh, K through, uh, three. And the reason we did that, we had a, uh, federal program site review last year, and that was one of the recommendations that came out of that review. Uh, our numbers are very high, um, with our English as second, second language learners, um, in the primary and the elementary building. As those stu, students become more, um, learn better English, uh, they eventually test out as they get older. So the numbers seem to diminish as they get older. But, um, the caseloads of the teachers at the K through three building, um, were just, um, extraordinary hi, extraordinarily high. I think they were somewhere around ninety per teacher or, or even higher. Okay, Steve's doing like this, so. Yes, go ahead.
You know, as Ms. Wilson mentioned, the, the restoration of the full-time music, P and R, it's not just about those subjects. It's about the other pieces that go with it. So when those students are in those special classes and still receiving rich instruction, their teachers can actually plan collectively together. And there were times where, uh, Mr. Denny brought me information, where third grade teachers are not able to plan together. It would be like, something like three of them playing together and then two come along later. You don't get the full impact of what you're trying to do strategically. So this is a better opportunity so that teachers can hear exactly what the plan of action is going to be, and then they operate with the same level of integrity.
Thank you for that point. Uh, the other, the other thing that we've done at the elementary schools, we've added a tutor to support the third grade guarantee. And this was done, um, uh, as you all have read about or, and, and probably have talked about extensively, uh, to make sure that those students have as much chance as possible to be promoted, um, at the end of third grade. Uh, Primary North, uh, we've replaced the building principal, so we finally have a full-time principal again. Um, we've added, um, Ms. Stiles again to add, as support one day a week. Uh, and we did have to add another section of second grade due to their enrollment. Um, and then you'll see, consistent with the other slides, we've restored the specials teachers. And we had to replace five teachers at that building, um, due to attrition. And then we, again, we did add the ESL tutors, uh, as I mentioned before. Similarly, at Primary South, we, um, have initiated the mentoring program and lead principal program, uh, where Mrs. Bray is mentoring all of these new administrators, uh, that we have. where Mrs. Bray is mentoring all of these new administrators that we have in the district. She actually came to us with a proposal, having been a new principal in the district herself in a bigger district where they have a, a living program like similar to this. And she said, "This is something that's really needed. Please let me take the lead on it." And she took the initiative to go to training and to learn about how to do it in a research-based way. It's not just willy-nilly. So she's put it together and she is working with our principals on a regular basis.
In addition to that, because I had the pleasure of being a principal coach in another district, when the principal coach recruits someone from your district, there is a bonus included. And so Mrs. Bray will able, be able to help defray some of the costs for us. Instead of having an outsider come in and try to take you to another district, she is our own work of art. And so it does benefit us as opposed to being a recruiter. I mean, that's what you turn into. You, you turn into a recruiter, and your job is to recruit other people, like we recruited Ms. Wallace.
So it's okay when we do it?
Sir, it's perfectly okay when we do it. And it's really taboo when other people attempt to.
I agree.
Yep, so.
Okay, and at South, we've replaced three teachers. We did have to add another section of, we added a teacher at, at Primary South due to enrollments, enrollment there. We have class-sized caps, and the projected enrollments were set to exceed those caps. So to be proactive, we did have to hire, what else? And then you can see the other consistent adds and replacement below with the ESL tutor and the building sub. We have added special education assistants, so those are staff members who are certificated but not teachers. So they have license through ODE, but they are hired to support special education students based on their IEPs. And so anytime an IEP requires a, an assistant, we have to, we have to hire. So those are costs that we don't really have a whole lot of control over. Again, we've reduced playground monitors, so we reduced eight of them at our K six buildings. The other thing that we've done, and I'm not sure how this is gonna try, turn out. You may hear some complaints, you may hear some cheers, I don't know. But we have subcontracted ourselves. So this is the first year that we have not handled them as employees in-house. We've sent, we're now getting them through Hamilton County, which sounded like a really good idea last spring. I'm a little nervous now, to be honest, because we are now competing with other districts for subs. We left our pay at eighty-five dollars a day, which is competitive, but there are some districts that pay slightly more. So if this becomes a staffing issue, we may have to come to you all with a proposal to increase that rate. I'm hoping not, we're trying not to panic, but I'm a little bit concerned about coverage at this point. So if you know any good subs, encourage them to apply through Hamilton County and request Winton Woods, and only Winton Woods.
Mrs. Wilson, can I ask, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Or Mr. Seymour? Those, those services fall under purchased services? What is the count, what is the projected count? FTEs?
I don't know FTEs. I know the projection is eight hundred thousand dollars in cost. I don't know how many people that will cover on a, there's no, all of our long-term subs, which will have to come in to teach a skill class for a long substitute, will be still hired from court? They'll still come through the district and be a district employee if it's a critical assignment.
If it's a long-term assignment. And by long-term, that's anything over thirty days. And so the savings comes from benefits. So previously, we were employing the people at eighty-five dollars a day. And we were, if, if they were here after thirty days, we were paying benefits. And then also, well, I'm sorry, that's it. Do you have any other questions about that? And that's, that's all I have, Courtney. Do you have any questions?
I, I have a question, and I think this is the, the time for it. Although it might occur later, depending on what the treasurer's gonna. If I do an algebraic total of all that, I come up with a net add of eight point seven people. Now, I had the benefit of looking at a worksheet prior to tonight. So my question is, is that about right? Because I have looked at the additions that are real employees. I've looked at the reductions that are real employees. I've looked at the contracted services, which is a dollar equivalent.
And the replacement.
Pardon? And replacement. So, but I, I guess, to preface it, I remember approving all that as, as it came to me one at a time. And, but I swallowed hard when I added up, that's the sheet I'm working from, thank you. I swallowed hard when it looked to me like an eight point seven increase. Eight point seven people, equivalent money increase. So two questions. One is, is it about right? And I don't need an answer tonight, because I just, I wanna check my methodology. And two, a comment for next year, Mr. Superintendent. I would appreciate your considering giving us what I would call a year-to-date total. So that as you bring an individual item, you need a new, you need an additional person for this function or additional person for that function. Year-to-date, that's net.
I got it.
That would be a great service to me. I don't know if the rest of the board would echo that request. For my interest, let's consider that.
Well, and keep in mind, the special education additions are fluid. So that's not something we necessarily anticipate.
I, I fully understand. But I'm just, as one who has to go out to the public and plead for money for basic, I would, I would like a, of a year-to-date feel, rather than only a year-end snapshot, is all I'm saying. Yeah, okay. I think the rest of my questions are for Mr. Seymour. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Mr. Smith, it's my personal opinion that I, I feel as if the appropriation changes that are occurring specific to the personnel services aligns with academic achievement. And it's something that I'm absolutely prepared to support. We did need to realign that, so I, so thank you for, and Mrs. Wilson, thank you for breaking that down in, in real detail. That was, that was very, very, very helpful. I'm gonna ask that question again, back on the purchase of service side. Roughly, the increase is eight hundred thousand dollars is what's projected. Not increase, but what's projected for purchase services, substitute teachers. That's fifty-two teachers the entire year. Is that, how many substitute teachers?
And maybe more, because on any given day, and we're trying to avoid this, but we have absences in, in those numbers. So that's not.
I'm gonna just do the math here in my head. We have roughly two hundred and seventy teachers. That means twenty percent of our teachers don't show up every day.
Well, it's not that they don't show up. So they may have scheduled professional development. They may have illnesses, or they may have use of personal leave. So it's not, it's not all just random sickness, but sometimes it's professional development that's required to meet. Last year, I know we were out of, our teachers were busy creating SOOs and doing things that were required by the state.
One thing to keep in mind, if a teacher is out on a long-term leave, that's charged to substitute. That does drive up your substitute cost. This isn't all one day here, one day there. This could be six weeks. Your six-week leaves will still be going through Hamilton County Educational Service Center. So, and then sometimes they get additional six weeks, right? So I, I wanna be clear, it's not all one day here, one day there. There is some longevity.
Family Leave Act, yeah, okay.
This will be.
Mr. Smith, you, I think, and I'll just make it clear, the reason I'm asking that question is I wanna feel myself absolute confidence that the appropriations we're about to vote on aligns to the academic achievement of our students, ensuring that all students achieve at their highest potential. I, I, so that's why I'm really drilling into this, that this is the delivery of making that happen. Where in the past, over the last three to five years, we've done, we've done a lot of cuts. We kind of experimented with cut, with cuts, and there's been a cost to that. We've realigned it. So once again, that's, that's why I'm kind of asking those kind of questions. That's the vein. I just wanna feel very confident that I can talk to the public and say, "Here's exactly what we're doing" in terms of supporting the academic achievement of our students. And I believe we are.
Well, we've, we've really drilled down to try to match it as best we could. It's really hard to make the, the full determination based on receiving another student with disabilities or a teacher being out for longer than two weeks or the ESL population growing. We can't say to the public, "We cannot service your child." We, that is our mandate, and we must do it.
Madam President, with that being said.
I've got some more questions. Were, I'm sorry, were you finished with your presentation?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, I've got some questions.
Oh, you want me to go ahead or?
Circling way back to one of your first slides, you mentioned that your office is the fiscal agent for tax money that flows through us to the private parochial and the for-profit schools that are in our geography, specifically John Paul.
Yes, that's the only state-sponsored school you have is John Paul.
Do you have a reasonable estimate of what portion of a person, how much staff it takes to handle the purchase orders and all the paperwork that you have to do for John Paul? Is it like a person, a tenth of a person, three persons, just really rough?
Well, it, Mr. Denny spends time with them and they also get federal funds, so it takes some of Mr. Denny's.
That goes through us?
Yes. It takes some of his time in budgeting all of that. And in my office, it, the requisitions throw through the process that they do here. Maybe a half a day a week. I, it varies, I.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Actually, my assistant, Donna O'Connor, handles all of it, except for Mr. Denny's portion of the federal projects. Most of his items is working through personnel issues. And once that's set, then Donna follows through with the personnel, and we handle all the requisitions and purchase orders.
I, I understand it varies. I was just trying to get a feel for how much of what we're required by law to spend doesn't go to our students, but it goes to someone else's students? And I'll follow up later.
Your community school bill this year is estimated at two point six million dollars.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, you mentioned the, the state has changed the method of calculating the average daily membership, the ADM, from the October count to three times a year.
It used to be called the October Count Week.
Yes. Do, are the other, are the dates known so that these folks out here can, you know, encourage unusually good attendance at those three points in the year like they have been doing for the October count? Do we know those?
The dates are being still, they're, they're not even set yet, are they the exact dates? So the answer to your question is no. Because you're supposed to be reporting attendance daily and accurately, daily. There thus is why you've seen a lot of the restructuring for EMIS in the district. It's not only financial, but all the issues. EMIS, during my stint in time, has gone from a clerical position to an executive director with, to, soon you're gonna have to have licensure and credentials. EMIS is really evolving.
And the, the special work that Ms. Wilson and Ms. Kilgore put into play, I don't know if people understand how difficult it was to retrain and retool people. It can't be a situation where we're saying, "That person is not here today." There has to be somebody else to step into that slot, especially with the district, I mean, the state, saying, "We want your count every night." Every night, they're coming in for the data. And the secretarial functions that were there before, people have to be more sophisticated than ever.
Okay. Final question regarding your presentation so far. You mentioned court-based tuition, students who are assigned to us by some court.
Or foster placement.
Or foster placement, and there is some money that comes from the court system to us.
No, it actually comes from the sending district. It comes from the district of parental residence.
Under order from the court, it comes from, does it cover our average cost per student or is it?
Absolutely not. We get around fifty-six, two hundred, five thousand, two hundred. Our cost per pupil is running over twelve thousand.
So we get something like?
And we also get handicapped children that way, too.
So we get reimbursed thirty-five, forty percent of what it costs us? Thank you.
You know, many people don't truly see that, like in community schools, in the community schools, the money flows through us. But as you know, the community school gets roughly five thousand, two hundred per child. From the state, we're only getting thirty-six hundred.
Mr. Pennycup, you mentioned about the students that were placed here based on parental issues and concerns. I, I don't know if you remember Mr. Seymour, but Mr. Seymour and myself, we signed ten of those today. So they come very often.
So as you saw, the last three years, we've discussed our appropriations, our budgets, we've had reductions. This year is the first year we've done some retooling, realigning, added some personnel. So I felt it was important to take a little bit of time, have Mrs. Wilson review all of that for you, be very open about what we're trying to do, why we're spending an extra million dollars. And, and that's the reason we've been going through this exercise, but all we've done is cut. This year, we didn't really cut. We've reinstated, realigned. We have new leadership. So I just thought it was important to take some time to share that one million dollar price tag that you'll be approving. And as you know, health, what, healthcare continues to be one of the issues that we work on daily here. So as we continue to outsource some of our personnel costs, you can see that the percent of our budget that's going for salaries and benefits has gone way down from in the upper eighty percentile. We're down to under, we're in the sixty percent, around sixty-eight percent of our operating budget will be for salaries and benefits. What this basically means is you have better control over your budget. Personnel and salaries and benefits are all contracts. You have better control over a larger percent of your budget. If I'm not making sense, just ask me, but as you, personnel, once you're in the personnel, you're under contracts and obligations. So we're, we have tried to shift whenever possible. We have added some non-personnel expenditures this year, our outsourced services. We have added a psychologist, nursing, curriculum specialist, all of our substitutes, we're trying to outsource. As we begin to outsource services, many, many other places, cost of benefits are less. And there is only one district in Hamilton County that is not part of the Council of Governments for substitute teachers. Courtney's nervous because we have competition. But CPS, Cincinnati Public Schools, is the only school district in Hamilton County, which is not a part of the consortium. And it's considered a council of governments. As a council of governments, you are exempt from all Obama regulations.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's, so, and also, as the special ed departments' needs increase and decrease, we're better off outsourcing those services to increase and decrease as needed, rather than being under contract with an, with an individual. Our non-personnel items are up two point two million, but you can see most of that, our tuition is up seven hundred thousand. Our community school tuition's gonna be up four hundred thousand this year. Our intermediate school is a school choice. We're estimating that tuition to be two hundred thousand. This will be the first year we have a school choice building. And then, of course, our utilities are up. And then we are doing more permanent improvement out of our PI fund, so we're purchasing the buses and general fund this year. As long as we can, I feel we should maintain our bus purchase cycle. Uh, we've been trying to purchase three a year and make it part of our ongoing bu- uh, budget. So our total expenditures, as you can see, uh, we're basically spending, spent last year what we spent back in two oh oh six. So, um, you can see the only difference is we're driving down salaries and benefits and increasing our contracted services. But every year when you go through the appropriation cycle, you're going to see the jump from the prior year's expenditures. Will we spend every, all this money? Probably not, most likely not. Everybody budgets and requests of Mr. Smith and myself every dime they can get. And then we see what we can legitimately support, and there will be savings here, uh, to go into our next year. But we never want to bring an appropriation to our budget to you and undercut ourselves and have to come back and ask for an increase. That would be unwise, getting our cash balance and where we're at and some of the items that we've added this year.
And I think the other part, uh, Mr. Cleary, you, you alluded to it. These are services that children deserve. It's very difficult to talk about increasing scores and increasing opportunities when we've undercut ourselves where children don't have the services. And, uh, I mean, we, we have to do business the right way.
And this wasn't an accident. Our estimated receipts actually still exceed our total expenditures. You didn't even know that till we're totally done with, uh, and, uh, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Wilson were even adjusting personnel clear up till I was done and set with my revenues, so I believe they even tried to make a change today. So, we're presenting you basically a balanced budget for this year. And if I continue your indulgence, we're going to go right into the five-year forecast, and I will try to speed up. What's in the forecast? Revenues, I've held constant. The only thing I've done is project estate increases for what I know is going to come it, when they fully fund our estate funding formula, as long as our, uh, projections for enrollment hold, hold. So this year, we got one point four, and I believe we'll get six hundred additional next year. Then for the forecast, I held it constant. Expenditures, I've included the negotiated agreements, settlements for this year and next year. Im increments on the salary schedule for those who still have increments in their schedules throughout the forecast. But no salary increases beyond twenty sixteen. Only increases for what we have settled and negotiated. Healthcare, I've projected at six percent, dental at five. Purchase services roughly at five. As you know, our purchase service line is more of our budget now than salaries and benefits. And supplies and materials at two. In FY nineteen, you can see, we'll still have three point four million dollars, but we will be overspending by five million. And that is the year that we need to tool up to replace our emergency levy. We do not at this time want to talk about twenty twenty. I will no longer be able to include in revenues for emergency levy. So our, uh, as you can see, for fifteen and sixteen, we're basically a balanced budget. This is where you're eating into your operating cash, and then it's a typical levy cycle where you start, you build your, your operating balance. You stay constant for a couple of years, and then you start to rerode that cash balance till eventually you have to go back to your voters. I think when it woods reaches twenty twenty, you should be very proud of the fact that you asked for four million dollars in twenty oh nine, and you went till twenty nineteen or twenty twenty to ask for more. Most school districts are on a four, three to five-year cycle.
I don't know if I've ever seen that before.
Uh, this graph is just trying to present to you that we, the green line is our total funds available, and we never want the green to intersect the red, our expenditures in our planning. The, uh, receipts and expenditures can intersect, but you always want to make sure you have sufficient cash carryover to fund you through your projections.
I know you guys see the graphs, the charts, and all the other pieces of information, but there's another part that you don't see. Having the pleasure to work with Ms. Wilson and Mr. Seymour, where we collaborate, uh, on a regular basis to make this a reality is the, the fortunate part for me. Uh, I've seen treasures and superintendents and HR directors battle. Uh, we don't battle, we collaborate. And it's always about the means to an end to, to make the process work for our students and for our families, so. You will never see that part on, on a document, but I would be remiss if I did not mention that.
We may have disagreements, but the next day we're at Hamilton.
We, we actually don't have disagreements face to face. They say things that I don't hear about, uh, behind me, but I, I, I understand.
I'd just like to say, um, Mr. Seymour, I appreciate seeing this in graph form. Being a visual person, that makes more sense than all of the numbers, and I appreciate that. I don't know about anybody else. But most people, when you're talking about that volume, it just makes more sense when I can see it in that form. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
And additionally, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to walk us through step by step so that we do understand it. Um, I don't think that anyone, at least up here, rubber stamps anything, but it's important, not only that we understand it, but our constituents understand exactly what's going on with the funds in this district, so we appreciate that as well.
Well, we took a little more time this year, but it's been three years since we've had to ask you the inquiries. So we thought we should take a little more time and show what we need.
Board, any other comments or questions? Mr. Cleary, were you about to make a motion a while ago?
I was.
Okay.
I was. I thought we were through the meat of it, and I was wrong.
Wrong.
Madam President and Board, I move to approve the permanent appro- appropriations for fiscal year two thousand fifteen as presented.
Second.
Mrs. Burns, second.
Uh, Mrs. Miranda.
I have one question. Uh, Mr. Seymour, will this be available on the website?
That document is not, but the appropriations will be.
Okay.
That would be difficult to load in to the website.
Okay.
For those of you in the audience, uh, Mr. Cleary took the, the courtesy of not reading the full seven-page resolution, but it is there for you. It'll be in the minutes verbatim.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Seymour.
Mr. Pennycap?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye. As Mr. Seymour also gave a presentation on the five-year forecast, are there any questions or comments regarding the forecast?
Madam President, I move to approve the five-year forecast as is presented.
Is there a second?
A second, okay.
Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Pennycap?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye. Eight point oh, reports of the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. As you, uh, go through the documents to see the six, uh, schools and the events that are taking place, uh, there's something that's missing, and we will add it, uh, later. Uh, Ms. Denny has worked diligently to coordinate a new initiative. And basically what happens in the high school, there's going to be a program called Lunch with the Superintendent, where we're inviting local businesses to come, and, uh, there's a shared cost where we have about fifteen seniors. We did our first one, uh, last Friday, and it was very successful, where we get a chance to hear what some of our goals and aspirations are from young people. Uh, and the local establishments get to hear how, uh, our children really value education. We haven't had that opportunity before, and so we're using lunch as that vehicle to come through. And, um, a board member will be invited to each one of those sessions. So if you have a special meal that you would like, you probably want to tell us that that's the one that you would probably want to attend. Uh, students were very, very appropriate. We were very impressed, and I would like to give a special kudos to Ms. Denny for, uh, walking up and down, uh, all of the areas in our, in our forest park area, uh, in Green Hills to make sure that we had the proper vendors there to, uh, help solidify this deal, so thank you this year. Thank you, yes.
So now you tell me I could have ordered a special meal.
Absolutely, sir. You could have, you could have. Uh, there were a couple of football players there present, and was it Skyline or Gold Star? Skyline. They were very happy to, uh, have a meal other than the regular cafeteria, uh, delicacy. Um, and then the other piece, please, uh, remember, uh, and this is not just to my colleagues on the board, but for everyone in the community and everybody watching. All, our events are not just about sports. Uh, we have a lot of exciting events, and our principals are working diligently to broadcast those events. So, uh, the more you attend, the better it is for the community, so keep that in mind as you read through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, eight point oh two, IDEA title?
Yes, this is a, um, presentation that will be delivered by Mr. Denny. The Executive Director of Accountability and Business Affairs, uh, the IDEA title budget for fiscal year fourteen fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Board, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to, to present this. I'm going to go through an overview of the federal grant for, uh, students with disabilities. It's called the IDEA Grant, or the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, passed back in early nineteen seventies as Public Law ninety-four, uh, one forty-two. This is, uh, the overview. We'll go through essentially, uh, what was last year's budget, uh, for fiscal year fourteen. That is the thirteen fourteen school year. We'll take a look at, uh, this year's proposed fiscal IDEA grant budget. Uh, and this will be the school year fourteen fifteen, and then there'll be a portion at the end, uh, where there's an opportunity for anyone here present this evening to, uh, render a public comment or give some, uh, input into the proposed budget. And, uh, this is all by design. I would ask, uh, if anyone does intend to, um, take that opportunity, that you go ahead and fill out one of the yellow slips here so that it follows the normal board protocol, and, uh, that way it's smooth and orderly and everything runs like it normally does at a board meeting. So, Board, this is your meeting. Thank you for allowing us to, uh, piggyback on your meeting and, uh, perform this valuable function. And here's one of the reasons I say it's valuable. This is from the National Dissemination Center for Children with Disabilities. This is on their website. But in the United States, right now, about one in five people have a learning disability. And that, that's from statistical sampling, actually. One million children in our country between the ages of six and twenty-one actually have some type of learning disability and, and receive special education in school. So those two bullets don't necessarily match. Not every child that has a disability is in fact receiving special education services, and that is why we search for them every year as required by law, uh, but it's something we would do anyway because there are certain needs that certain children have, and it's our obligation and mandate to meet those. So this is IDEA in a nutshell. As, as you recall, we defined that. It's there on the first bullet, but it's the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It's a federal special education law, and it basically ensures that any public school in our country serves the unique needs of students that have disabilities. And in Ohio, there are fifteen different categories that those children could possibly be classified into to better serve them. Uh, IDEA requires that schools provide these services to students via something you've probably, I'm sure, heard many times, and that is the IEP, which is the Individualized Education Program. Just to kind of look backward, sometimes it's helpful to see where you are by looking back. This is the IDE allocations from fiscal year two thousand eight until this year, and you can basically see the, uh, funding line tracking each year. This is the amount of money that the federal government determines we can receive as a district, and then it's passed to the six hundred and nine school districts in Ohio through the Ohio Department of Education. That was our initial allocation last year, just in terms of ex- exact dollars and cents. It's eight hundred fifty-two thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars. This year, we're just a little south of eight hundred ninety thousand dollars for IDEA. And again, I, I'm very much like, uh, Ms., uh, Dr. Johnson, who stipulated that visual is, is assistive. It certainly helps me, uh, and I think it helps, helps the vast majority of people who are visual learners. This is a graphical summary of last year's budget by function. And of course, in the accounting world or in the world of the treasure, what we're talking about is what function or how is the money being used? What's it being used for, I should say. It's instruction, uh, governance or administrative costs, professional development, non-public school costs, or indirect cost. And so I think the major piece I'd like to demonstrate just in this particular slide, and this is true for both last year and the proposed budget this year, is that the bulk of the money is spent directly on instruction, and that is absolutely by design. We feel that most of the best kinds of supports we can put together for our students involve highly trained professionals who are passionate about kids and education, working with those children. Governance administration is, uh, also added in, and this, and this is from last year, but it's proposed again this year because there is a, a very high demand placed on the school system in terms of accounting for these students as they move to and fro, as they experience different things in their education. There's a great deal of record-keeping that has to happen. The non-public cost is actually defined by the state. That's not something that the district does or doesn't do, and it's right at about forty thousand dollars. That is directly for John Paul II, and is directly from the IDEA grant. And then there's the indirect cost that is also defined by the state. That is basically a, a revenue source that the district is permitted by the state and the federal government to collect to sort of, uh, purchase service charge for the time and the personnel and the resources that we spend administering this particular grant. So this is FY fourteen, last school year. This is the same information, the same dollars and cents from last year's budget, but expressed this time by object, which is how is the money spent? So this slide is what's it for, and this was how was it spent, if that makes sense. So by object is, was it a salary? Was it a fringe benefit? Was it a purchase service, or was it something else? And that something else, you see, lines up with the indirect cost, because that's what that was. And again, the bulk of it is spent salaries and benefits because that is what provides that big blue slice there. That's the instruction. Those are the people working with the children. This is the proposed FY fifteen budget, again, by function first, and I'll back up two slides. You can see how similar it is. Um, instruction, support, services. We do have a small amount in there proposed for this year. Governance, uh, administrative costs, professional development, a little more than last year. Non-public cost, about the same. Again, that's determined by the state. Indirect cost substantially less. That's also determined by the state. So this is the proposed budget by function. And just another way of looking at it, this is the proposed budget by object, so how would the money be spent? This is for what purpose, and this is how. So again, if you add the red and the blue together, you can see it's pretty similar to last year.
You have to go slower for Dr. Johnson.
I was trying to skip over that one. I thought about what order to put this in, so it was easy to compare and follow, but... This will be available on our website, and, and so, you know, by request, if anyone would, would like to see it, we can certainly make sure they get a copy of it. So that's the presentation. The question at this point to the Board is, do you have any questions? And of course, to anyone from the public that's here today this evening, if you'd like to fill out a form and address the Board or provide any input, we'd be sure to capture that in the minutes.
Mr. Denny?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you give me a little understanding of what you mean by governance?
Governance, um, you know, I don't, honestly, it's mostly just administrative costs. This is how it's worded in the actual grant budget. So we have, uh, a, a particular professional that's on staff who's very skilled and very experienced and accomplished at dealing with IEPs, getting records from other districts, uh, tracking changes, being sure that any, uh, rights that these students have, that we satisfy them and that we have the correct records in the correct spots. Ms. Darcy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. What was our grade last year on our special education report card? We met. It was all, it's not like you get a, I'm sorry, I shouldn't use grade, but it's like twenty-eight areas.
It was an A.
Yeah. When you get twenty-eight out of twenty-eight or whatever it is.
What does that mean?
It was a hundred percent. So we had, we had basically complete and total compliance with all facets of what is really a pretty intensive...
Absolutely.
...process, a- as it should be for students that, uh, have added rights, really. That's really and truly what they have, and, and they have barriers that they face that most of us scarcely can, can understand, and so it's a good process.
Mr. Denny?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Dr. Johnson?
I just see you have, uh, support services up there, but I don't really see it as a slot. You said a five.
It, it's right over there. It's, it's a little sliver. It's kind of like our investments. It's five hundred dollars. It, it's way over to the, I'm sorry, Mr. Seymour, that was kind of a dig. I didn't mean it that way.
It's so small, you don't even see it.
It's five hundred. It's far to the left.
I see it.
Yeah, that's, that's essentially acting like a placeholder for the budgeting, so that if I have carryover, I'd like to slot it there. I have carryover, I'd like to slot it there.
What were your support services with such a small amount?
Well, that's a placeholder. So, if there's carryover, which there should be, then I'd like to propose that later that we allocate that in accordance with this, but also push a little more into support services. Those are things like psychologist functions, speech services, supports for students that are not directly tied to instruction. This is where it gets a little different in the federal grant world than the changes Ohio just tried to make, where they're getting down to just 3 categories, where they're counting speech and occupational therapy, physical therapy, psychologists, anything that's kind of loosely tied to instruction, they're counting as instruction. Well, the feds don't do that. It's very granular. And so, they would classify a support service as psychological testing services, or something like that.
Mr. Denny, I think it was, I think it was your 3rd slide. You don't have to go back to it, but where you were showing the IDEA grants over time, and our student count hasn't changed dramatically. So, is that a legislative issue that it's bumping? It's like a roller coaster?
Yeah.
Because don't we always supply the same services?
Yeah, essentially. Our special education population tends to fluctuate between, what would you say, 17 and 19%?
17.
17?
Last couple of years, it was about 17.
Okay. So, it's fairly stable. These are, honestly, some of this, I truly have no idea. I guess at the grant budget every June to try to plan what we're doing, because the cycles don't always line up. The federal fiscal year ends in September, September 30th, whereas our state fiscal year ends in June. So, it creates some interesting dynamics across the summer. That precipitous drop you see there, from almost 1.1 down to less than 900, was changes in state funding formula and federal funding allocation. So, it's probably legislative. But, I know it was change in formula, whereas everything else you see there is simply the amount of money they have. The second they allocate it to us, they're going to reallocate, because there are changes around the state. It's not just our district. It's all the districts in the state. So, there's a lot of readjusting that goes on across the year.
But, Mr. Cleary, I do see your point. If we know that our numbers are consistent, then how do the dollars fluctuate so deeply when we have the same population that we're going to serve within the 17% range? If they can anticipate that next year will be 15%, then you see the adjustments. But, that's not in the formula, and the formula is awkward.
If I could piggyback onto your piggyback, because this is an item of special interest for me. When Congress passed this law roughly 30 years ago, the Congress at that point promised that they would fund 40% of the incremental costs that it takes us to provide the special services for the special students. Congress has never come close to that 40%.
No.
Hovering somewhere around 12, 13, 14% of that cost. So, that would describe what's not shown there, because that's just the allocation. The real expense is someplace off the screen above the roof.
Absolutely.
Right.
That just shows the variation from year to year, which is not, at the legislative level, it's not a function of need. It's a function of what's left over by the Congress after they funded defense and home security and 1,000 other things. And frankly, education takes the hindmost, and about 800 of us Board members from around the country descend on Congress every February 1st weekend to try to encourage them to move it up to their promise. And it's to no avail so far.
But, you know, Mr. Penneka, if the 800 Board members did not converge on Congress, it may be real different.
It may be, maybe worse, yeah.
Hard to forecast what would have happened had you not done that. That's always part of the problem in education.
So, Mrs. Darcy is very helpful in giving me some anecdotes to use to talk about extraordinary costs.
Right.
By the way, which we're happy to provide to the students who need them. That's not the issue. We're trying to do the right things for students. Congress should at least consider approaching their promise.
Well said.
Thanks for the opportunity.
So, we're spending right now, according to Mr. Seymour's numbers, 7.8 million.
That would be in the general.
In the general fund that will go to.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yeah, this is nearly a million in federal dollars that supplements that 7.8. Seeing no further questions, thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Denny.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. 9.0, Superintendent's Recommendations.
Recommendation is to approve the personnel schedules. Schedule A, resignations and retirements. Schedule B, certificated employment. Schedule C, support staff. Schedule D, extra duty and supplemental employment. And finally, Schedule E, leaves.
So moved.
Do I second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
9.03, the updated secretary job description?
Yes, Madam President, if you could turn to your copy, if you guys have a copy of the job description. There are several bullet points. I'd like to have you pay special attention to Bullet Point 4, 7, 14, 21, and 24, and I will read only those pieces.
Are we skipping 902?
Wait a minute. Yes, we skipped the
I'm sorry.
Alternative licensure.
We did skip 902. Let's go back to that so we can stay in order.
Okay.
My apologies. 9.02, resolution requesting alternative license.
Yes, I will briefly read the resolution requesting alternative license. Whereas the superintendent has advised the Board, there is an immediate need to seek an alternative teaching license for Rondee Wright from the Ohio Department of Education for the position of health and physical education. Whereas the Board has been advised by the Superintendent of Cincinnati Public Schools that Rondee Wright has completed the requirements for alternative licensure for health and physical ed. Now, therefore, let it be resolved by the Wittenwood City Schools Board of Ed, Campbell County, State of Ohio, that pursuant of 3319.225 of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board requests the Ohio State Board of Education issue an alternative resident educator license for health and phys ed, for education for K-12 for Rondee Wright, in order for him to serve in the certificated position of health and physical ed. Section 2, the Board instructs the Executive Director of Human Resources to take all steps necessary to convey the Board's request to the Ohio Department of Education. In Section 3, it has found that all formal actions of the Board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this Board and shell, and all deliberations of the Board in any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were meetings open to the public or otherwise compliance with the legal requirements included in 121.22 of Ohio Revised Code.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Are there any questions on this resolution?
Mr. Smith, am I, Mr. Smith, am I right in looking at the document? They already had the license, they've already
Yes, sir.
They already had the license
Yes, sir.
of CPS.
Yes.
So, we're just converting it, transferring, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Transferring it over to Wittenwood.
You are correct.
I just wanted to have a copy of it.
I was working on it, too. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Madam President, I'll move to approve the resolution requesting alternative license as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye. Thank you. 9.03, the updated secretary job description?
Madam President, as Ms. Wilson came forward to talk about the cross-training of the secretaries, there are some very specific strategies that had to be implemented. And it would be Bullet Number 4, enters and maintains educational management information data as directed. Bullet 7 maintains attendance records and prepares related reports. Bullet 14 processes student transfers, assists with student withdrawals, and maintains records. Bullet 21 prepares all required reports and maintains all appropriate records and appropriate data, district databases. And finally, Number 24, assists families who have moved out of the district and prepares letters regarding attendance, withdrawal, and truancy. These are additional work sets that secretaries may not have had to adhere to in the past, but with the intense reporting, daily reporting from EMIS, these are additional skills that they had to acquire in order to meet the guidelines.
So, is it my understanding they've all been sufficiently cross-trained?
Absolutely. Ms. Wilson is also doing something very unique, where she is sending out correspondences to the principals every week, and expecting them to send back a reply. How are the secretaries, how is this process moving, and do we anticipate any problems along the way? So, we're doing our checks and balances internal, as opposed to waiting for weeks down the road. This is a weekly audit, so to speak.
Have we gotten any feedback from the secretaries?
We have received feedback that they have been cross-trained.
Mr. Smith, have you heard back on the unintended consequence of, well, adding more to the job description makes complete sense for what they need to do, but going from a 9-month to a 12-month contract? Because most of those secretaries were 9-month contracts, so.
There was some conversation about the 2, well, it was actually a 10-month to 12-month. And so, there were some additional conversations. There were 2 secretaries that brought some special issues to Ms. Wilson's attention. She was able to handle that very effectively, and those issues have been resolved at this point. She has been very, very reassuring to the entire staff that we will come back and make any adjustments at the end of this year to see if those services are needed. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Do we have a motion yet?
No.
Let's get the motion, then I'll raise my question.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the job description, so I can talk about it.
Second.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just an observation. When I read this job description before tonight's meeting, I couldn't recall seeing a job description that went to 3 pages, which leads me to the opinion that we may not, in the future, be appropriate in calling this job a secretary position. I don't know what the next title is, but 3 pages of requirements and duties and so forth would indicate something else.
Something more sophisticated.
For your future consideration.
Yes, sir.
I had a question or statement. There was another bullet that I found a little unusual. Maintaining building budgets for all accounts. Is that a new job description for this secretary? You were listing all the ones that were new?
Well, in the past, I know from where I lived before, the secretaries didn't really maintain it. They actually kept track of it, where you did not overspend when you thought you had more than you, you know how that works.
Right, yeah, okay.
Doesn't happen in our real lives. It just happens in schools.
Okay. And one other point that I seen, there was something in this job description about certificates, licenses, and registrations. So, are you saying that this particular secretary will be licensed and certified, bonded and insured?
No.
Or are you just saying she's going to keep track of it? Is that what this description is saying?
Can you read it?
It just says, it's, the heading is certificates, licenses, and registrations. And it says valid certificate slash license as issued by the Ohio Department of Education. So, I didn't know whether that meant that this person would be, no.
Can I just require, so if there were one requirement, it would, uh, whatever.
Oh, okay, so not for this one. Okay, okay. Because I'm like, wow, a secretary has to be certified. That's like, I agree with my colleague, then this position is a little bit more than, you know what. Okay, all right. That was my 2 questions.
Any other questions or comments? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Seymour, will you call?
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye. 9.04, revised district calendar.
Madam President, I just want the public to be aware that the revisions are not due to change the dates, but to show accuracy, because we're moving from days to hours. Okay, all right. The other thing that we're going to work diligently on in the next few weeks, and we will come back to the Board, we think that it would be very appropriate to have a special parent calendar, so parents can know exactly what these PD dates mean in order to be friendly to all of our constituents in the district. This is a professional calendar, but it's also a teacher calendar. But, I think we should have a parent calendar as well. It looks a slight, is slightly different. For instance, when you have the first professional development days for teachers, it would show the first start date for students. And so, it's a little different, but it's more parent-friendly. So, we're going to work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, I move to approve the revised district calendar as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye. 9.05, new and revised Board policies.
Recommendations to approve the new and revised Board policies as presented, but I would like for the Board to pay special attention to 5460 graduation requirements. I think I sent each Board member an update over the weekend about the new requirements, so we want you to know exactly what that means to our students.
Mr. Smith, if you don't mind, would you elaborate a little bit about those changes that recently were sent to us, so that our audience would understand those?
Yes.
Want my copy?
Yes, sir. So, Ohio's bill, Ohio Bill, House Bill 47, it was recently signed June 16th, established new requirements for earning a high school diploma in Ohio. And here's a summary. The new graduation requirements take effect for the class of 2018. Students who are entering 9th grade for the first time in 2014-15 school year. Students in the class of 2015, 16, and 17, and those who are repeating 9th grade this school year will continue to operate under Ohio's current graduation requirements, including taking the OGT test in the spring of their 10th grade years. The new requirements did not change the current courses of numbers of students that students must complete to be eligible for graduation. And so, in the assessment section, additional to course credits, students must earn points toward graduation on 7 end-of-course exams, and these exams will eventually replace the Ohio graduation tests. And so, the courses in which the students take an end of the course exam will be English 1 and Algebra, English 1 and 2, Algebra, Geometry, Integrated Math 1 and 2, Physical Science, American History, and American Government. And the districts have the option to use a state end-of-the-course exam to replace their current course final exams, and use the state's test as part of the class grade. This will help avoid double testing in future years. So, students can earn from 1 to 5 points for each exam based on their performance, and they will be categorized in 54321, Advanced, Accelerated, Proficient, Basic, and Limited. So, eventually, the OGT will be a thing of the past. And these are choruses that are more directly related to content-specific strategies.
When I saw this, it struck me that the scoring is similar to AP testing. So, is there really any correlation, or is that just a similarity?
I think they're trying to use something as similar as they can, but the states, the tests are vastly different. And I think they use these categorical ratings in a variety of test simulations, and sometimes they don't have any direct correlation, but the state makes its own rules up as they go.
And for the English and the math, do you really need only a 2? I noticed that for what's required, I think they noted a total of 4 points for English and 4 points for math. My basic math tells me that's a 2 on each one.
That's the basic requirement. But, remember, Wittenwood's, and I'm very happy to say, Wittenwood's was pretty assertive in their mathematical process. This is the first year that the state has required students entering 9th grade to have 4 years of math. Wittenwood's put this into place, how long ago, Mr. Denny? Yeah. So, this was very, very proactive, knowing what was going to come. Districts who waited until the state says you need 4 are in trouble, because, number 1, there's no intervention strategies already associated with it, and it is our goal that And it is our goal that we have an intro to an algebraic course for students in seventh grade, and hopefully they get that Algebra 1 experience as an eighth grader, which means they have six years to get the four years done. And we hope during that timeframe, students probably start liking math again, and they go on to take more advanced courses, more than what the state required.
I think it's important to say that most of what Superintendent just read, which is legislation passed this summer, is not incorporated in the policy that we're adopting tonight. That's the old stuff, basically, for this year. And so we have, we will have to revisit that. In part, the state hasn't made up their mind on how many total points you will have to have.
State is waiting to see how districts struggle with this.
Yeah.
Not necessarily ours, but other districts.
Any other questions or comments regarding the revised board policies?
I just have a question. We voted on board policies in the July meeting, is there something significant?
These are just second, these are the second reads of those policies.
Second reads of them, okay.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, okay. All right, thank you.
Madam President, I move to approve the new and revised board policies as presented.
Is there a second? No additional questions or comments, Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye. 10.0 Board of Education reports, legislative report from Mr. Penneka.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. My report will be brief tonight because I think we have other pressing duties to take care of before the evening gets away from us. I just wanted to highlight one thing, and that is the Common Core state standards. If you've read the newspapers at all, you know that this is quite an issue in the State House, and lots of lobbying back and forth. Fifty people testified last week on one side, and probably another 50 people will testify tomorrow on Wednesday in two other hearings. I just, and I don't wanna get into the merits, pro and con of Common Core, which is, by the way, only math and English. It's not the whole world. But the current bill that's being debated would do, and I'll get to the punchline in just a minute, it would eliminate or even prohibit the use of Common Core standards that we've been working on for four years. It would prohibit their use after this school year. It would eliminate beyond Common Core, or having nothing to do with Common Core, it would eliminate and prohibit the use of the standards for science and social studies that the state adopted in 2010. It would prohibit the use of the park assessments. It would put in place the Massachusetts standards for math, English, language arts, science, and social studies for two years, two years only. And it would require the State Board of Education to develop standards in four subject areas for use beginning 2017-18. To cut through all that, if you have a freshman, and I know two people in the room tonight have freshmen who started school last week, your child will face three, if this bill passes, your child will face three different sets of state standards for math, English, science, and social studies during their four years of high school. I bring it only to give you some additional perspective. As you read the newspapers, and remember, some of what you read there is true, keep in mind, yes, that's the way I meant it, keep in mind the turmoil it would cause your students and your teachers if something equivalent has passed, so. That's your additional perspective as you read the newspapers. And that would conclude my report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Penneka. Mr. Cleary, is there a report from Great Oaks Career Technical Center?
Yes, Madam President, board, the highlights of the August 2014 board meeting. The Great Oaks has been working hard, just like Witten Woods, in getting our accreditations. There's several new accreditations that we're engaged with at the Great Oaks. Accrediting, accrediting Commission of Career Schools and Colleges, ACCSC, one more acronym for us. That's the Adult Work, Workforce Development Division. We met all the standards, and we earned a three-year accreditation. The Commission on Accreditation for Rehabilitation Facilities, CARF, we earned this three-year accreditation for programs and services for students with disabilities. And our Advanced ED certification. There are 2,978 high school students currently enrolled in the Great Oaks program. I'm not exactly sure what our account, what our count is. That will come out at this month's board meeting, how many students we actually have from Witten Woods. I know Mr. Smith has had the opportunity to meet with many of them last year.
All of them.
The Great Oaks is looking forward to you visiting again this year. One other item, the Great Oaks tries to find jobs for their students over the summer, and they do surveys with those current employers. In the recent survey of businesses that employ Great Oaks students, 90% of the respondents indicated it was a positive experience, and 95% said they would hire another Great Oaks student in the future. So with that being said, I have nothing further on Great Oaks.
Thank you, Mr. Cleary. 11.0, any board motions or recommendations this evening? Hearing none, 12.0, comments from the board members, Superintendent?
Right at this time.
I have comments, well, we're gonna go around to them?
Yeah, start with you.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to thank publicly Mrs. Katrina Rugless and the Good Catch organization. They donated backpacks that I had a opportunity to collect school supplies for another event, and I had extra supplies. And I was, happened to mention to her that I had extra supplies, and so she went out and bought backpacks and gave me backpack, well, through Good Catch, through the organization. So I just wanted to thank them. We're gonna donate those backpacks to, well, with supplies inside, to Primary North and Primary South. We're gonna split them. So I just wanted to thank her for continued work and effort, and I just happened to mention that I had these supplies, and I was just putting them in, the leftovers in Kroger Bank to give them away. She says, "I got you." And so I think that deserves kudos and thank you, so I just wanted to say that.
Outstanding.
Yeah.
I appreciate her efforts.
Absolutely.
Anything from you, Mrs. Miranda?
Nothing from me. I would like to publicly thank Superintendent Smith, and Mr. Denny, and Ms. Denny, and all those who made these signs possible. The board had really verbalized some time ago the vision of needing to have something, for those of you on camera, you can't see, but we're looking at the identical sign that's in front of us on the opposite wall, so that we are continuously reminded that we are working for the betterment of every single solitary student in this district, and that they can receive, achieve their highest potential, and that's what we're really all about. That's what we show up here and stay late and debate over and discuss and vote and do all the things that we do. And so we wanted to make sure that people knew what we stood for, and we also wanted to be reminded as we deliberate what we stand for and what we continue to work for. So I wanted to publicly thank you for the work that you put in in making these a reality and bringing our vision to fruition. Thank you.
Thinking about getting one for my home, Mrs. Burns.
For your home?
Just put it up on my ceiling, so I can look at it.
Mr. Cleary, anything from you?
Yes, Madam President and Board. About 20 minutes ago, our, the administrators that were here in the room left, and I wish they were still here, and I had the opportunity to say this. Mr. Lanier, Brad's still here. I had the pleasure of running into Brad and many of the administrators the first day of school. At 5:30, I showed, at 5:30 in the morning, I showed up at the high school, and there were still two teachers that beat me to school at 5:30. To greet them all, to say, wish them the best for the school year, and I had a chocolate bar for everybody to give them a little extra kick whenever they needed it, maybe at 8:00 AM. But they worked long, hard days. If tonight is any indication of what your normal day is, Brad, and everybody else in the room, you're probably on 15 hours, so you almost worked two days today. So thank, thank you for that. It doesn't go unnoticed. I left the high school and went over to one of the other schools, and it was just, it was, it was a great day. And I had one other comment, something really touched me that morning when I was here at the high school. But there were students that were showing up at 6:00 AM, by the way, and I was surprised at that as well. And that occurred last year also. But there was something that really touched me. A car pulled in the parking lot, a mom and dad, and a young girl got out, and she was in uniform. And you could tell, they weren't really sure where to go, so you, you just knew that she was a freshman. And because I was the greeter at the staff door, they happened to park on that side of the parking lot. And they came up, and I could see there was all this apprehension, do I come up, do I not come up? And they came up to me, and I greeted them, and they spoke no English. No English. I wasn't prepared for that. I'm not bilingual. I know a little, but not enough that I could reassure them their daughter would be okay, and other than through speaking loudly and articulating, a very inappropriate manner because I couldn't communicate. But that being said, you know, I ushered her into the building, and the best I could reassured the parents, and we got an ESL aid to come immediately. The young girl spoke no English at all, the parents, that's all they could say was no English, no English. So that really touched me, in that that probably is not an isolated case.
Right.
And Spanish isn't the only language, with 25 or 28 languages that we have at the high school. How, how do we, and we're doing the best we can do, but...
We can do better.
We can do better.
We can do better.
Aligning staff in our hiring process of trying to find staff that are bilingual, and maybe compensating staff to pick up bilingual is another, is another certification of some type. It's a, it's a whole new need that, until I experienced it, and I was thinking if I was, if I was the parent, I'm dropping my child off, that had to have just been so scary for those parents. I mean, all I could do was smile, and they didn't know what I was saying, and just try and reassure them everything would be okay. So with that said, thank you to the staff that goes the extra mile, you know, because you're going the extra mile today. And so, so are the rest of you as well. Thank you, thank you.
I do have a comment. Mr. Denny, I think he called me at 4:00 AM, something like that, and I knew, so I looked out of my window, I knew it wasn't snow. And he assured me that everything was fine, except that we didn't have power in some buildings. I would like to publicly thank the staff, especially the administrative team, for keeping things under control, making sure that Duke energy came through like they say they would. We did it to our delay for the entire community because we know that siblings connect with siblings, and we didn't want to separate issues. And so, thank you, Mr. Denny, for all your creativity. Kind of walked around in my house in the fog, but I made it here because you shocked me. And so I, I would just assume that this is our practice for the polar vortex for later on. But I think the staff was very, very efficient, and parents were able to kind of set their parameters and their clocks at a different time to get their kids here on time, and we had a good day. The second day of school.
Yeah, great.
Yes.
Mr. Penneka, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do have two topics, and, Mr. Superintendent, you set the table perfectly for me when you said power outage. I want to talk about the bond campaign. Wouldn't it be nice to have buildings that had backup generators for our kids? Wouldn't it be nice to have backup generators at the bus garage? And I mentioned the bus garage, you say, why, why that at the moment? This is the first week of school. We are still getting the student list from all those private and parochial and for-profit schools that we have to serve by our bus fleet. So bus schedules are probably different every day until things settle down. Wouldn't it have been nicer to have power at that building so that we could customize the message about what buildings are affected, what bus routes are effective? And the way to do that is to get involved, friends, board members, staff, another extra mile, to work on getting the word out, the importance of the bond, the construction bond issue. We only have about two months to the levy. Mrs. Miranda is doing yeoman's work to harness volunteers who've come forward from the community and the staff on their own time to begin to formulate plans for a campaign that will be unfurled here in about a month. But the prep is now, your donations of your time and your money, particularly your time, well, particularly your time and your money, are needed right now. See her, she'd be glad to take your name and give you an assignment. We can't do it without a large cadre of people that are helping to generate a buzz. Mr. Lanier, bring your dad, I know him. Wouldn't he like to see a science teacher with a newer science lab? Just as an illustration, yeah, yeah, okay. That's topic one. Topic two, I think most of us are in receipt of an email from Mr. Jones at the high school pleading for more mentors. The Academy of Global Studies program has an integral part of it, mentoring from people such as us to pass on some life, not tutoring, but pass on some life experiences, as these freshmen, in this case, are trying to find their way, trying to anticipate what they want their way to be in the world, and to hear real-life examples that all of us have of things that we have bumped into in our careers, and how we've handled them, and whether they were successful or not, to share those with students. It's only 15 dates, 15 one-hour meetings a year, but you can, you can have a big impact. And I have to tell you, you were touched in your, in your story about the students that didn't speak English. At the high school, after your luncheon, on the way out of the building, I heard someone, I was still in the, still in the hallway, and I heard a girl call my name, my name, she, Mr. Penneka, turned around, and I recognized her as a student that I had had as a mentee last year. Couldn't remember her name, but she came up and greeted me warmly and said, "I miss the mentoring." I didn't know, I didn't think I had reached her, but something in that. And she's now a sophomore, and the mentors have been reassigned to the incoming freshmen, so she's without that mentoring structure. The opportunity is there, if you can provide one hour every other Friday, yes, the hour is 7 o'clock on a Friday morning, that's the hardest part, but please consider it. As of today, I think Mr. Jones still needs another 15 or so mentors. That would conclude my remarks.
Thank you, sir. 13.0, comments to the board from the Teachers Association, I think Mr. Lanier spoke earlier. Is there anyone from OPSY who needs to speak to the board? Thank you, sir. 14, is there a need for an executive session this evening?
Madam President, I move that we move into executive session to discuss evaluation and performance.
I second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Seymour?
Mr. Penneka?
Aye.
Mr. Cleary?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Miranda?
Aye.
Mrs. Burns?
Aye.
There are no intention of conducting business after the executive session?
Will we need to, will we have to vote on anything?
This evening?
Mm-hmm. No.
I don't think that we do. Hearing none, for those of you, you have no need to stay unless you just really have nothing else to do. Hearing none, for those of you, you have no need to stay unless you just really have nothing else to do.